Thank you, Mr. Dellinger. Council, I think it'll be okay with you for the mayor to take privilege this evening. I'm gonna just do the next two items out of order. We'll come back to the adoption of the agenda, but I'm gonna go ahead and move the presentation portion of our meeting up at this time. And I'm gonna go down front where I can see everybody. Rick is my go-to guy, as you can tell. Couldn't function without him. So as I mentioned, tonight is a special evening. We are going to present a couple of folks with the James R. Stevens Award. This award has been presented over the number of years. If you have a program, you can look. It goes all the way back to 1988. And every year since then, I believe I counted correctly, we have acknowledged a person in our community to receive this very prestigious award. In fact, I'll just read off of the program itself. It says, "This Service to Garner Award is our community's most prestigious recognition for public service rendered over an extended period of time, and is intended to recognize people who have made substantial outstanding contributions to Garner over a period of years." And I won't take time to read the bio on the memorial in the back, the memoriam of Mr. James R. Stevens, but he is the individual that this is named after. Some of you in this room possibly knew him, and certainly you know his family. So we honor him as we do this evening. So I'm pleased this evening to have persons come forward who were involved in the nomination of these individuals. But before I do, I should mention that the committee this year had outstanding nominees. And so we, of course, did the groundwork that needed to be done, and then we had a vote, and the vote was very close. And so many years, we only have one recipient, but this year, because the vote was so close, it seemed appropriate to recognize the two individuals that we're gonna recognize this evening. So both very deserving persons, people that are known to you. But at this time, I'd like to call forward, let me see, Alicia, if you will, come forward at this time. I left my other note up there that had your last name in it. Okay, yeah, please. She's gonna, she's gonna recognize her first nominee or introduce her.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Alicia Puckett, and it was my honor to nominate Kathy Behringer for this award. Kathy is a dedicated civil servant to our town, and she's a valued friend. She's currently serving her fifth term on the town council, and she's involved in many other activities and groups around Garner. I met her through the Garner Women's Club, and I'm proud to know her and call her a friend. I can rattle on and on about her service and dedication. You guys can read it all here, but I just really wanted to say it's my honor to nominate her. She's very deserving of this award, and congratulations, Kathy.
Okay, so around the process, good, and she can come down. I should, I should mention while she's coming down, we will probably have a brief recess after these presentations, so we can take pictures and congratulate folks in person. So just, just so you'll know that. So Ms. Behringer, let me get my, so I too can, I too congratulate you, and the town would like to present you with this plaque that says, "The James R. Stevens Service to Garner Award Presented to Kathy Behringer on this date." Thank you so much. Personally, I want to thank you for your work on the council over the years, and of course, many other ways that you have given good service to our town. You're to be commended, and I, and I congratulate you, and we'll be happy to hear any words you'd like to make at this time.
Just a few.
Okay.
Whoops. Okay. So just a few words. You know, when you think about an honor like this, it's almost overwhelming to be included in the ranks of those people that have been recognized before. And I have been to many of the presentations and listened to what they were honored for and said, wow, you know. But I really never thought about it in terms of myself until the mayor called me, and then I said, wow, again. So I wanted to share a few things about what brought me to where I am. When I have people tell me, you need to talk more at the council meetings, and I'm going, well, I don't, you know, why do I need to talk more if we've already covered everything? And I remember, but my family would, would tell you that, that's not true. I don't need to talk anymore. And I remember as a four-year-old, my dad saying to me one day, sweetheart, can we just be quiet for a while? And I remember saying, but daddy, I like to talk. And, but fast forward a few years, my dad was a bit of an armchair philosopher, and so the, one of the things I remembered over all these years was, he was fond of saying, it's better to keep your mouth shut and let people think you're a fool than open it and remove all doubt. And so I've kind of tried to live by that. But when I moved to Garner 29 years ago, 28 years ago, I met Pam Cash. We moved here 29 years ago, but I met Pam a year later. And Pam was just coming off of a year of treatment for a very serious, eventually fatal disease. She fought it long and hard and made a lot of contributions to this town. And she said that when she recovered from that first year of treatment, that she decided she was gonna do everything she could to make her community a better place. And those of you who knew Pam knew that she absolutely did that. There's so many things that you can ride around town and say, Pam was involved in that, Pam was involved in that, and we all miss her, but she was a wonderful, wonderful influence in my life. Another thing that has always stuck in my memory is when the former mayor used to say, service is the rent you pay for living on this earth. And I think that was so very true. It's not about what we can get, but it's about what we can give. So thank you all. Thank you for the award. I will do my best to live up to it.
Okay. Okay, so the next recipient of the award this year is Mr. Jones. And to present him, I'm gonna call on a couple of fellow Rotarians of mine, Mr. John Adams right over here, who will come up and present Jerry, and then he'll be followed by Mr. Buck Kennedy. So gentlemen, come on up and join us at the mic if you will. Might have to raise it for this guy.
And I did a little check in our, we date back to, I did your first individual return in 1978, and that must be 40-something years ago. And if you wanna see them, we still have them. And through investment club trips in our early days, to tennis, anybody ever play tennis with Jerry? Long legs, long arms, and you hit that ball hard as you want to, Jerry just keeps bouncing it back. To fishing trips in Alaska, you want me to tell any tales about that, too? That's okay. To client referrals over the years, and all the things that Jerry's done all these years, we've talked about them for 40-plus years. And that's over half my life, Jerry. So we appreciate you, deserve, you deserve it, and we want you to hang around a while longer and keep on doing good for Garner.
Can you raise it up a little bit? That's good. Congratulations, Kathy. Mayor, council, staff, and co-conspirators, and friends, I've known Jerry for not as long as a lot of you have in here, I've only known him for 40 years. We, my most memorable first encounter, I believe, was when the sirens went off and Jerry and Lee Hudson would run out the back door, or the only door, from upstairs at the tootin' tail, to the sound of the sirens for a fire alarm. They were probably the first one at the fire station because it was almost across the street. But some of you, a lot of you here, might not know that Jerry is, is a homegrown fellow from Garner, was born and raised here. Maybe I should say reared, but I'll say he was raised here. And the, the good thing for us is that he stayed home. He didn't leave Garner. Well, you might not also know that he was a member of the last graduating class from the old high school there on the corner of Garner and Avery Street, Garner Road and Avery Street. And when I tell you that part, then you know how to date him as a qualified senior citizen. I'm not going to, I won't, everybody here that knows Jerry knows him for a lot of different reasons, and knows that he's very deserving of this award. But as I say, you know him for different reasons. You may know him for the fact that he was a professional businessman, and still is. You may know him for his ever-present smile, what we in the country call a mule-eating briar's grin. That's a big smile. That's a positive thing. When somebody says you can smile like that, now that's a smile. That's, that's worthy of a good camera shot. You might know him for his business acumen. You certainly know him for his loyalty, not only to his business and to his community, but just the fact of being here for us all of these years. Some of you will know of him for his generosity, for his community support, and perhaps, of all things, you'll know that he is indeed a friend to Garner. And if we are lucky, we know Jerry as a personal friend, and I think that ranks pretty well at the top of the list when you have, when you have good friends. So that's the Jerry Jones that all of us know in our own separate ways. You're very deserving of this award, the James R. Stevens aptly-named Service to Garner Award. Congratulations. Thank you.
We, we have sort of a saying in our Rotary Club that, you know, when you're in a public venue and you're supposed to, you're supposed to mention the club. I think I've done it, where is Stone back there? I think I've done it at least three times, Stone, so don't ding me in the morning when we, yeah. But the part of the reason I say that is, this gentleman here, I don't think we mentioned it, he's a charter member of the Morning Rotary Club, isn't that right, Jerry? Which means either you're very old or you started very young. I'm not sure about it. So Jerry, I'm pleased to present this plaque to you, signifying that you received the James R. Stevens Service Award in the year of 2022. As others have mentioned, very well deserved. It's been my pleasure to know you, mainly through Rotary, but through other venues as well. And your record of service is, is beyond reproach. Thank you for all you've done over these years. We hope the Lord will give you a lot more time to continue doing service for our town. Thank you, and the mic is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Appreciate that. I'm not as good at remembering as Kathy is, so I need a note or two. I'm just stunned. I wasn't expecting all the family and friends here, so thank y'all for, for being here. I really, really appreciate that. I know most of my friends have their pajamas on this time of night, so I know it's a sacrifice for somebody, but yeah. Anyway, I'd say thank you to everyone here, especially my good friends, John Adams and Buck Kennedy, the Stevens family, Ken Marshburn, Mr. Mayor, and our town council. Thank y'all for continuing this tradition, the James Stevens Award. It's a, it's a great tradition for our town, and thank y'all for doing that. It's wonderful to be recognized here this evening with Kathy. You know, anything I ever did in service to Garner was, because it was fun, it was engaging, we got to meet and work with a lot of really great people. As y'all know, this town's full of great people. There was often a serious side to the fun, but it was always interesting and entertaining. I never thought that you'd get an award for having fun like we did, but here we are. I've known the Stevens family since the 1960s. James' wife Evelyn shared an office on Main Street with my dad while they were, while she was working with the Garner News. And Mr. Sample will remember that, Garner News. And if you've ever worked for a, a small-town community paper, you know that means you are highly interactive with the town, with the community. And that's the tradition of the Stevens family ever since they've been here. They've been involved in every facet of this town and on so many levels. And I could go on and on about this wonderful town and the, and the people that are here, but there's still work to be done, and it's getting done tonight by these people here who are taking the time that we really, really appreciate. the time that we really, really appreciate to go over the things that... I saw that agenda you have tonight, and I don't think everybody here wants to stay around for the annexations and the street stubs or whatever y'all call them and that kind of thing. It's hard work, and I know it can go into the wee hours sometimes, so we really appreciate y'all doing that. It is a great honor, though, for me and my wife Brenda. She's my Superwoman Support Team. It's a great honor to be a part of this group. So, thank y'all. Thank you very much.
Okay. I didn't bring my gavel down with me, so Mr. Kennedy had told me earlier that if he spoke too long, I could gavel him down, but Buck, I left it up there, so I wasn't able to do that. Thank you all for being here. We could assume that you may want to stay around for our business meeting, but... And that's fine, but I know many of you will be leaving. But before you do, I'm going to declare about at least a ten-minute recess till at least 7:30. And actually, we need to set up some tables here for our meeting. So, at this time, I'm going to announce that we're in recess. Feel free to move around, come see these folks in person, take pictures, or whatever you want to do. Anything else I need to mention, John? Okay? All right? So, we're in recess. Enjoy yourselves for the next ten minutes. One item for further discussion. So, if that's the case, I'll recognize... Is it Mr. Dale?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. Some members of the public had some questions that I didn't feel adequate to answer for them. So, I'd like to pull that and put that on our agenda after our BRT piece of...
Okay. That's the item number two, the street stub completion policy.
Yes, sir.
That we'll pull from the consent agenda and put it under New Old Business. We'll make it item number two under that segment of our agenda. All right? Any other items that council sees on the consent agenda that you'd like to have further discussion on?
I'm reviewing the items one, three, and four on the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Motion properly made in second. All in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, it would be no. Okay. So, at this point, we will... We don't have any public hearings listed on our agenda this evening, but we do have a presentation from, I guess I could call him an old friend. He worked for our town some years ago. So, also one of our staff members as well, Gabby. And they're going to speak to us about the Wake BRT Southern Corridor update, and we look forward to hearing from them. So, Gabby, you go first.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the town council. As you mentioned, many of you are familiar with Hett Patel here with us from the city of Raleigh. And he's going to be providing an update on the Wake Bus Rapid Transit Southern Corridor, and I will hand it over to him.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Town Council members. It's good to be back in front of you again. Did get a chance to present to you during the pandemic once. Happy to be back. Probably should come back more often, but we'll try to do that as we continue to advance Southern Corridor.
Come back anytime you can. Thank you.
So, we always like to start our Bus Rapid Transit presentations with the overall program overview. We have three projects that are in the Federal Transit Administration's Small Starts Capital Investment Grant Project Development Process. There are different levels of design, so the most advanced is New Bern Avenue at 90% design. We're anticipating construction starting for that project in early 2023 with service for the project in 2025. Southern Corridor is at about 10% design, and that will be our focus of the presentation today with the anticipated next step for the Southern Corridor, the Small Starts Ratings application at the end of this month. And I'll get into that detail on the next couple of slides. The Western Corridor is also at 10% design with the anticipated Small Starts Ratings for that corridor in August of 2023. And then the only corridor that is not in the federal pipeline at the moment is the Northern Corridor. The 2021 Wake Transit Vision Plan update recommended some extensions to the Northern Corridor that needed to be studied further. So, we're currently kicked off a major investment study to identify the routes out to Midtown Raleigh and Triangle Town Center as the planning phase of that project before that goes into a federal pipeline. So, just again, kind of going over a background for the Southern Corridor. I'm not going to go through all the bullets that are outlined there. They do highlight a lot of the council actions that have happened on the Southern Corridor leading up to where we are today. In 2021, Town of Garner Council endorsed the South Wilmington Street extension as the preferred alternative. Then the city of Raleigh also made those endorsements, and the locally preferred alternative was adopted to the Capital Area MPO's Metropolitan Transportation Plan. We then submitted the project into the Federal Transit Administration's Capital Investment Grant Small Starts Project Development Process and were accepted in July of 2021. And from that point onwards, we've begun the preliminary design phase and the environmental documentation work for the project. So, an overview of the Southern Corridor. Again, it is 5.1 miles with 3.8 miles of dedicated bus lanes. That is more dedicated lanes than what we have on the New Bern Avenue Corridor. So, this would be about 75% of the corridor would be dedicated bus lanes. It would connect downtown Raleigh to Rupert Road and Garner at the Walmart Supercenter. There are ten proposed stations. Nine of them would be new station construction for the Southern Corridor. One station would be existing construction that would happen on New Bern Avenue with that being a project that's more further advanced. There would be seven CNG buses, or alternatively, field vehicles needed for the Southern Corridor service operations, and that does match what was needed on New Bern Avenue with a similar total project length corridor. Again, I mentioned this. We began preliminary design in fall of 2021 after being accepted into the FTA Small Starts Project Development Pipeline. We are at about 10% design right now with the summer of 2022, and we're looking to submit the project to the FTA Small Starts Rating Submission by the end of this month. The deadline for that is August 26th. So, what are we including in that application? From a design perspective, there are three segments that are important to understand and development of the project cost and the budget. So, there is Segment One, which is the right business access and transit lanes, which are ARBAT. That's in downtown Raleigh and along South Wilmington Street from MLK down to City Farm Road, Keter Center Drive. There are a couple of short segments within that Segment One that are in mixed traffic on South Street and Salisbury Street. And then Segment Two is the median-running transit way. Again, this is the higher level of transit service where we are able to have dedicated bus lanes that are physically separated from general-purpose traffic. And that would be along South Wilmington Street from City Farm Drive, Keter Center Road, down to Garner Station Boulevard. And it would include a South Wilmington Street extension, which has been on the city of Raleigh Streets Plan. It's on the Town of Garner's comprehensive plan as well as a roadway-street connection that would utilize Bus Rapid Transit lanes, have bicycle-pedestrian infrastructure, and also... bicycle pedestrian infrastructure, and also have general purpose lanes. Again, there's a short segment in segment two that would be mixed traffic being southbound on the South Wilmington Street flyover for some right of way constraints there on the existing bridge. And then segment three, within the Town of Garner's jurisdiction, along Garner Station Boulevard to Rupert Drive is all mixed traffic operations, and that's really due to there not being a lot of traffic along Garner Station Boulevard and not a need for dedicated lanes. So what does segment one look like? Again, right business access and transit means that the dedicated bus lanes are along the right side of the roadway, the right curb side, and you have a dedicated bus lane that the buses are operating in. General purpose traffic is allowed to get into those lanes to make particular right turns, so if they're going in and out of a business, or if they're turning on a cross street, they can get into that lane, but they're not supposed to drive blocks at a time in that bus lane that's on the right side of the roadway there. And so again, a couple of graphics that show what it looks like within downtown on Wilmington Street, Blunt Street in city of Raleigh, as well as along South Wilmington Street, south of MLK there. And then segment two, again, this is the segment that would be utilized on the South Wilmington Street Extension coming into Town of Garner, down to Garner Station Boulevard, where we do have plenty of right of way. We are planning to have physically separated bicycle lanes and sidewalk pedestrian infrastructure along with the dedicated bus lanes in the median, which is physically separated from those two general purpose lanes. Where there are right of way constraints specifically along South Wilmington Street where you're going under I-40 and some other right of way constrained locations, we would merge that bicycle pedestrian infrastructure into a 10-foot multi-use path. So where are we on the process on the Southern Corridor? Again, this is a two-step process from the Federal Transit Administration perspective. We are in step one, which is in the project development. You see the gray bullets, those are things that we have completed to date. We submitted our PD application, identified our alternative, locally preferred alternative, and have a local funding commitment. The next step is to submit the project for a ratings application, which determines the federal eligibility of the project, and then continue to advance the environmental review, the NEPA and SHPO documentations, the third-party agreements with NC DOT, and then continue to advance final design, engineering, and utility coordination for the project to get it ready to receive those federal funds if it is eligible. And so that's where you can kind of see the buses where they are on that timeline. Step two shows the full funding grant agreement. Again, that's needed before we move into the construction phase for the project. New Bern Avenue is really close. You may have seen some articles late last week that came out about the New Bern Avenue project receiving the 35 million grant allocation from the federal, grant agreement from the Federal Transit Administration, so we're hoping that is fully executed by the end of this month, and we would have the funds to move forward into the construction phase for New Bern Avenue. The last time we presented to you, I believe the Western bus was ahead of the Southern bus, so that is a shift that has also happened with what we are presenting today. The Southern Corridor is slightly ahead at this moment with going into the Small Starts Ratings Application this month and the Western Corridor going into a ratings application next August. So what does the Small Starts Ratings Application really do? Again, it defines that federal participation for the project, it defines the overall project scope, the length being the 5.1 miles from downtown Raleigh to Rupert Road, Walmart Supercenter, and Town of Garner, the mode being Bus Rapid Transit, and again, that final termini points. What it does not do is lock into any final design elements that we would go into with 30% to final design work that will happen in the upcoming years. So there is some room to, for the stations to continue to shift a little bit, there is some room as advanced engineering and design happens for some of the design elements to change slightly, but what we are doing again is trying to identify a total project budget, what we're submitting to Federal Transit Administration for what the ask is, and so from that perspective, we have a Federal Transit Administration Small Starts Funding ask of 49.4% with 50.6% of local funds coming from the Wake Transit Plan. And I did mention earlier in my presentation, the South Wilmington Street Extension being a new roadway facility that would have dedicated bus lanes, bicycle pedestrian infrastructure, and general purpose lanes. So the general purpose lanes part of that project would not be eligible for a capital investment grant Federal Transit Administration project because that is not transit related. The Federal Transit Administration project can include the dedicated bus lanes, it can include the bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure along that extension, but it could not include the local general purpose lanes. And so we have identified that as a concurrent, non-eligible project cost, and that would be some future discussions and considerations needed to identify local funds for how that extension has the general purpose lanes included as we advance. So overall, the project cost again is 173.91 million for the federal project as it would be submitted, 185.91 million when you're including the general purpose lanes as well. What do we anticipate for the ratings for the project? Again, the projects are rated in two categories, project justification and financial commitment. The financial commitment receives a high because of the local funding commitment that we have for the project through the Wake Transit Plan. Project justification receives a medium, and the overall rating would be medium-high, and just a note, we have down there again, the New Bern Avenue Corridor received the same rating of a medium-high, so it had a medium in project justification and a high in financial commitment, and so we have the same rating here for the Southern Corridor. And then the overall next steps for the BRT program, again, for the projects that are in the federal pipeline, for New Bern Avenue, it's executing that full funding grant agreement that I mentioned for the 35 million, and then advertising the project to bid for construction. For the Southern Corridor is submitting this application this month in August of 2022 and continuing to advance the preliminary design and environmental documentation. And then for the Western Corridor is to continue to coordinate with some of the large capital projects that are on the corridor, try to get a better cost estimate for the Western Corridor, so continue to advance the preliminary design and environmental documentation and get it ready to submit to ratings for August of 2023. And then the Northern Corridor, which is not in the FTA Small Starts Capital Investment Grant Project Development Process, it is to complete that planning phase of the study to identify a locally preferred alternative and to identify if either of those locally preferred alternatives could be a federally competitive project, and then submit the project development application for that corridor. So I think that is my last slide, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, y'all, thank you, excuse me, for the very able presentation. Some exciting stuff there as far as I'm concerned, to see where we are and where we're going with this project. So council, I'll start with Mr. Matthews over here to see if he has any questions for you.
No, great presentation, and I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Singlin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Patel, for your presentation. Question, the total cost of Southern Corridor, 173.917 million, with construction costs, road, gray costs, not constantly escalating, but they're not, they're not going to get cheaper. Do you think there's enough contingency built in to these plans? Because that's, you know, quite a bit, quite a bit of money, and if you have, you got $173 million, it increased 3%, that's a nice chunk of change too, 3% of that amount of money. So do y'all feel comfortable or something that you're constantly have to, having to go back and review?
I would say we're certainly comfortable with the number now. It does include about a 40% contingency on the cost right now. Again, we're at 10% design, so it does have a high contingency added to the costs. Initially, when the Wake Transit Plan was going through this process and the four corridors were identified, the Southern Corridor costs were much lower, but again, with what's happening in the market conditions, we have escalated those costs. Also, learning through the New Bern Avenue process, the Federal Transit Administration required to carry 30% contingency all the way through to 90% design, final design, so that is something that we plan to do for the Southern Corridor as well and keep that a healthier contingency built into the project cost.
You learned a lot from the New Bern Corridor.
Yes.
You learned a lot moving forward with the other ones.
And we are using a slightly higher inflation percentage for the year of expenditure dollar calculation, so that does include that as well.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Behringer.
I have no questions, I'm just very excited about the project. It has been needed for a long time, as most of them are, but we're, we're seeing that it's about to happen, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Dallinger.
Just two questions. The segments weren't phases, they were just segments that delineated the different patterns, so it would all be constructed kind of more or less simultaneously.
That is correct. It is still one project. The segments were to better explain how the Bus Rapid Transit treatments would happen throughout the entire corridor.
The other question is really on the, the branding and naming of stations, was there a process for that or what's envisioned for that? We want to make sure we have Garner on our stations.
So we have gone through a system standards process that's worked on station design. From a naming perspective, on New Bern Avenue, we have used traditional transit convention for station naming, so really identifying cross streets for where the station is located to again help people that may not be from the region really identify where the station is. So the couple of stations in Garner, you know, I think we would have some future coordination where we could work with to just make sure that the naming makes sense.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's good to see you again, a very thorough brief. Just want to, if you can, is it possible to go back to your timeline?
Yeah. Was it this one or?
It wasn't that one, it was the one that had a fall 2021 on it and summer 2022.
Oh, right here.
There we go.
Okay.
All right, I'm good. Just wanted to see that. Thank you. That's all right, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, somebody's got to ask silly questions, so I guess I'll ask it. So, you know, the, these, these plans, pavement and sidewalks and all the other stuff that go there, the, the buses that will run on those, are they part of the project or, okay, so the cost of those and?
Yeah, the project cost does include seven CNG buses, and they would be 60-foot articulated Bus Rapid Transit style buses, so they're larger than the traditional local buses that you see.
Did I read somewhere, I don't know, would these be regular fueled buses or?
So they are planned, for New Bern Avenue, it is planned to be compressed natural gas buses, and the city of Raleigh has a bioenergy anaerobic digestion project also that's happening that's going to essentially make it zero emission buses because we're using energy that's being generated in the city to fuel those compressed natural gas buses. There is an opportunity in the future as the second quarter comes online and third quarter comes online to potentially look at electric fleet for the Bus Rapid Transit buses or alternatively fueled, zero emission buses.
Yeah, that's good to hear, good to know. I, I hope our town, I believe it is, is getting more conscious of green energy and those kinds of things, and I was encouraging to know that that's going to be a part of this project for sure. Okay, I believe we're receiving this information. Council, anything else you want to ask Mr. Patel before he steps down? Well, thank you. We will expect to hear from you again, had a future date, and who knows, maybe one of these days we can take a ride together on the bus.
Sounds good, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, council, we will move to what is now item number three, excuse me, number two, which was pulled from the consent agenda, and that is the street stub completion policy, which this council has had quite a bit of time to consider and so forth, but there's interest this evening in having some further discussion on that. So at this point, I will recognize Mr. Dallinger for the initiation of that discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, I do have a few questions that were posed to me around the definition of non-conformity in the policy, and so if Mr. Trezenberg could help answer some of those questions, that would be helpful, particularly around, on page three, there's mention of stubs that don't conform and then eliminating non-conformities, and I think there was not real clarity on what is meant by non-conformity, particularly when I guess these stubs are, altering them is initiated by a development plan versus a non, sort of static non-conformity.
So I think the best way to try to explain that is, and some of this, some of this is also coming about, we're also putting together a, a kind of a written interpretation of things that are in the ordinance to hopefully help benefit the technical review committee, developers, whomever, because this is one of those issues that's just not explicitly really said in one clear black and white statement. But in, in the ordinance, and this really hasn't changed, I would say significantly between the previous versions of the ordinance and the current one that we just adopted, there's a delineation between temporary dead ends and then permanent, permanently dead end streets, so temporary versus permanent. The ordinance has criteria for the permanent ones, and that's, and that's the one that we have as, as an example now in the language there right before you get to section four. We previously had the example from the temporary, but the permanent one seemed to probably speak to more people, so we thought it would just be good to maybe change that, what's essentially a reference to, to the UDO requirement. So the, the temporary ones are allowed to be up to no more than 1,000 linear feet because the idea is, is that when they're made, then they will be either finished or carried through somehow. Those stubs create frontage for the adjacent parcels that they're stubbed to, and so the ordinance then requires that your frontages be addressed. And so when the property at the end of that stub then comes into play, then we're looking at making it a permanent, a conforming type situation for a permanent street. So then we're looking at a different set of criteria. It's not 1,000 feet for permanent ones, there's different, different lengths depending on the setting that you're in. So where we, where we end up then getting to is that when something was classified by the ordinance as temporary beforehand, but it's too long to meet the permanent standards, we either get into a situation of it needing to be connected through so that it just becomes a through street acceptable to block lengths, or the developer, if it's with less than 500 feet that it would be created, they're allowed to go to the Board of Adjustment to get a variance that would allow a permanent termination of that street up to no more than, like I say, 500 feet, and that has to be due to either topographic or environmental type issues. So it is, it is pretty well defined for the Board of Adjustment as to how they make So that's why we kind of had that language in there from the start that, just to remind folks that, hey, you know, the ordinance still has rules that have to be met as we're moving from temporary to permanent, and the policy was not envisioned to address what's already in the ordinance, but to, to address the gray areas where things are currently temporary and could remain permanent if they can meet the permanent requirements, because then those don't necessarily have to be connected, and so those were the ones then that the policy was really set up to try to give us some criteria to judge against, because at that point, it could be, to be compliant, it could be a cul-de-sac if it's less than 200 feet in some cases, or less than 250 maybe in some others, or it could be connected through and become a through street, so that there's, there's multiple ways then at that point, and the ordinance doesn't always, and quite often doesn't dictate which one, and so that's where. And so that's where kind of that gray area is that the policy was meant to address.
Yeah, I think part of the, what was a little confusing is it, it talks, it says additionally, any stub that does not conform to any other applicable regulatory requirement in the UDO, i.e. temporary dead end streets in excess of 200 feet. So I think it's sort of defining what a conformity is, is that being the only non-conformity that's being addressed. Is that correct?
So it wasn't the intention. The intention was just to give an example from the ordinance.
I saw that i.e. versus the e.g.
Gotcha.
is important because otherwise this is the only non-conformity. Okay. I think that helped maybe. I think the other thing that was sort of added versus the original version under the exemptions. So well, actually right before, so it says unless exempted below vehicular stub must be completed between development, redevelopment and redevelopment abutting properties. And that's, I think that's fine. But then as we go into the exemptions, there was a line added notwithstanding the requirement to satisfactorily resolve non-conformities, the following exemptions are identified and hereby established. Originally, it just read the following exemptions are established. And then it's sort of, those exemptions become conditional upon, so they're almost like, again, the exemptions aren't sort of available. They're all, they're sort of, it's sort of circular saying they must be connected, which would resolve the conformity. And then it's like, notwithstanding the requirement to resolve the conformity, these exemptions are available. So it almost makes the exemptions not really available.
So, so again, that, we added that after we brought it to the full council work session. And again, the, the intention there was just to kind of remind people of what was in two paragraphs above in section three, just to set folks didn't go right to the exemptions and be like, oh, you know, we go straight there because that's the meat of it. That was just put in there to re-clarify and restate that, hey, the ordinance does have requirements that have to be addressed first. And then if that's, if that still leaves an unanswered question, then we come here.
I think it's clear when it's not repeated because the sort of ultimate paragraph says that must be completed and it states all the conditions that are forementioned conditions. But when it's added back again, it sort of negates the exemptions. So I think it probably is clearer on the exemptions if we remove the notwithstanding line that was added and then just leave the original language that was there the first time. So I think that makes it clearer for what the triggers are.
Yeah, I, you know, we've had different groups looking at this and we're talking about it with developers, citizens, y'all, planning commission. Sometimes what seems like might be helpful to one group ends up not being as helpful as you hope, so.
Yeah, let, let me see if other council members want to weigh in on this since, well, it's open for discussion. Mr. Singleton, any questions?
I'm going to clarify what I think Mr. Dettler just said. I just want to make sure I understand what he said. On item four, you, you're right, you're suggesting that the, in the red, the notwithstanding the requirements to satisfy the resolved non-conformities, you're saying that that should be, not be there. It was added, not be there and just go back to the following exemptions are identified hereby established. That what you, that's what you just said. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to clarify that. That's, that's all.
Uh, Ms. Beringer. Mr. Vance.
Ready for motion?
All right. So, okay, well, thank you for the explanation. Was there, was there anything else? Okay, all right.
I mean, that, that'd just be part of the motion is to approve the stubs policy as presented with the removal of the, notwithstanding the requirements to satisfactorily resolve non-conformities removed. That would be the.
That's the motion you'd like to make?
Yes.
Or, okay, that's, counsel, do you need clarification on exactly the, the change in the language there? Does everybody understand that? Vance, anything?
Just a second.
Okay, all right. Yeah, there is a, there is a motion on the floor then, so is there a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote then. All those who favor the motion with the language indicated, please vote aye.
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no. And there is none. Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Trezenbergs, very much for indulging us on that. Sure enough. All right. I believe that is the only items, those are the only items under new and old business. So I'm going to move to committee reports. I'm not aware of any, but I'll ask counsel.
Yes, sir, there, there is one.
Excuse me.
Okay. Apologize, was not able to get to you earlier about this, but a report from the, the human relations committee. We have Ms. Rosemary Rockford. She will be stepping down from the Garner Veterans Advisory Committee. And, and, and actually to appoint Mr. Don Sears, I think it's the name pronounced correctly, to the Garner Veterans Advisory Committee in, to take that open seat. And also would like to reappoint Mr. Tony DeRocco to the senior citizens committee.
So just to repeat, as I understand it, Ms. Rosemary is stepping down and filling her place immediately, I suppose, would be this Don Sears. Is that correct? Okay. And the other recommendation is Mr. Tony DeRocco. Did you say senior citizens committee?
Senior citizens, yes.
Okay. All right, counsel, any questions for our H.R. committee in regards to these recommendations? So we'll accept that as in the form of a motion that you're recommending. Okay, so the motion is to appoint these people seconded by Mr. Dellinger. Any questions or comments? There are none, so if you favor the motion, would you please vote aye?
Aye.
If there's any opposition, no, and there is none. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. That committee is, stays pretty busy much of the time and.
And I would also say thanks for all the support that we have as well.
Yeah, okay.
Very good support.
Working together very well as a team, so I appreciate that. All right, we are now down to item K. Well, are there other committee reports? I don't think I heard anybody else. Okay. So ju- just a quick word on committees. Obviously, the presentation this evening was the first iteration, if you will, of the Stevens Service Award that was handed over to the town. Going forward, it's my intention as mayor to look a little bit further at the structure of that committee. We pretty well followed the, the process and the, the structure from the days when the Stevens was done, not by the town. But I think it works pretty well, but I think it's time to probably take a look at that and moving forward, how we may want to, if, if at all, restructure how we do that committee. Beyond that, no other committee reports. I'll ask the town manager for his report at this time.
Right, Mayor, Town Council, I'm going to call on Assistant Town Manager Miller to go through the Talk of the Town monthly update and highlight some things on that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Before you is your August Talk of the Town monthly update. Just a few things I want to highlight for you. And of course, we're happy to answer any questions you may have. If you look at the second page of the report, we have some updates on some areas of interest, particular interest to the council members. One, looking at the update from Duke Energy on their park and plug program. This is something that we've been excited about that has been delayed, but they're starting that program up again and looking at bringing two E.V. chargers to the town hall campus. And so Duke Energy has been talking with staff about finding the appropriate locations in order to have those installed. And so we're looking to, to have those installed sometime in the fall timeframe, so that's exciting.
Would, would, would those be for consumption by staff and town people or?
They would be public, is my understanding. So, so anyone who's visiting the campus or staff could use them, so.
And a fellow who, who uses, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Also wanted to give you an update on the debris removal stats. This is something that the council approved after one of our severe storms over the past summer. Public Works completed the debris removal on the 22nd of July. 105 loads were picked up. That equals just under 2,000 cubic yards of debris was picked up by our public work staff. The additional cost for the cleanup was just under $15,000. This was from, for rental fees for some of the equipment needed to do the pickup as well as the tipping fees. And we had four, a four crew, four members assigned to a crew for doing this project for about two weeks. So as you had commented in the past, there was a lot more debris out there than we really had anticipated based on that storm. We've also kicked off our pay and class study for the town. The pay and class study, study is on schedule and includes all town full-time and part-time positions as well as Garner volunteer fire rescue positions as well. All the questionnaires have been submitted by staff and they're now with a consultant who is taking a look at those questionnaires. The next step in the process includes doing interviews by our consultants with certain work groups in order to make sure there's a clear understanding of the duties and responsibilities for those positions. And we anticipate getting a draft of the completed report probably in late fall. So just wanted to make you aware that that's well underway and it's on schedule. And finally, it's hard to believe we're talking about the holidays in August, but we're starting to plan for the holiday festivities this month. Town staff has met with the parade committee to start talking about what the holiday celebrations are going to look like. We've identified a date of December 3rd to be able to have a joint event downtown that's going to include a block party hosted by the town as well as a parade soon after, produced by the parade committee. And we're going to end the evening with a tree lighting ceremony as well. So just wanted to let you know that that planning is well underway and we're excited that we're going to have a day full of wonderful festivities in December. On the last page of your report is your monthly statistics for the Garner Info App. Just to give you a sense, in the last 30 days or so, we've had 37 total requests, of which most of them have been about, almost 19% have been for tall grass and weeds, which is pretty typical for this time of year. And of the requests that have been received, about 84% have either been completed or in progress. So with that brief highlight of the report, I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have or call on my colleagues to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, thanks so much, Ms. Miller. Good information. So I'll start, Ms. Beringer, you have any questions? Okay, Mr. Singleton?
Yes, Ms. Miller, the welcome signs at the town gateways. We're talking about the, I think we discussed the large metal signs. That's what was talked about. Not the, that's what we're talking about right now.
Yes, yes, yes.
I'd like to mention that there's one on Highway 50 right in front of the Dempsey-Bentham Water River plant that is badly faded. That if we're going to look at ordering some more signs, that one, that one should be replaced. It's pretty, pretty bad, pretty faded. There's another one I cannot remember.
I think that one, a replacement for that one might have been ordered prior to the discussion about the other places to add them.
Okay, that's good. That's just, that was really faded bad.
We will follow up just to see the status of that.
And I appreciate you all addressing the Thompson Road Timber Drive light crosswalk issues that we're continuing to have there. Thank you.
Mr. Dellinger?
No questions.
Ms. Beringer, did I get to you?
Question, but Mr. Singleton reminded me of something. I had a request from some residents out Old Stage Road about having just even a little tiny little sign that says Garner Town Limits or, you know, welcome to Garner. They don't seem, some of them don't seem to know whether they are in Garner or Fuquay. Like to know where Garner's jurisdiction begins.
Yeah, that's, we'll look into that. That's one of those areas where some of Old Stage is in the town limits and some is not, but we could get one probably close to Eagle Ridge or somewhere in that area.
On Eagle Ridge, and they were confused about that, so I did my.
We'll follow up with Public Works as well on that one.
Okay, Mr. Matthews?
That's great, I hear them signs because you can go out in the country, Fuquay has signs all over the place. You never know where you're at. But, but other than that, great report. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'd like to say that again, a good report and for the storm debris, the storm debris removal stats. I know during one of the council meetings, I mentioned about a dead limb that was on a tree hanging over Old Garner Road. It appears that it's been taken care of. I know that was a, a spot, the one spot out of a large area. And I appreciate the attention to detail in getting, taking care of that situation. Appreciate it.
Intrigued by, you know, the, the, the numbers of the tonnage that was picked up. I mean, you know, as you move around town, I, I see evidence of the storm, but if somebody asked me how much it would be, I wouldn't have guessed nearly that much. And kudos to our Public Works Department for getting it all, for getting it all done, so. Okay, was there, was there anything else from the manager?
I have one more item to talk to you about. As staff, primarily planning staff prepares for the CLUE engagement with consultant. If you remember, that was something that the council endorsed during the, the council retreat, character land use elements. And so we're into planning for having those meetings and putting steering committee together. And I think we're going to try something a little different than what we've done in the past with steering committees. We feel like it's important that all members of council and all members of the planning commission have input. So the steering committee, what we, what we hope to do this year is to combine the council and the planning commission together for steering committee and have four meetings. And the plan is to possibly have those prior to the planning commission meetings, have two of them before the planning commission meetings and two before the town council meeting. And go through the different elements of that study and have both bodies provide input and have buy-in to the whole process from beginning to end. And there'll also be some opportunities for some breakout committees, more strategic items that might be broken out that we don't need the whole group for. But for the steering committee, we think it's important to have the whole group. We think this is going to be really important for the council going forward, kind of as an add-on to, you know, some of the elements that are in Garner forward and to kind of give staff some direction on kind of what the character of the town is going to look like, some development kind of features and things like that as far as what the town, what, what zoning and what type of development you'd like to see. Those meetings, like I said, would be before a planning commission and/or before town council meetings. And the dates we're kind of looking at now are Monday, September the 8th, Tuesday, October 18th, Monday, November the 14th, and Tuesday, January the 16th. And when are we proposing those with start Jeff timeframe? Is that?
Rodney, the, the, the 8th is not a Monday. There's some, there's, we can't do, we can't do the first one before a planning commission or a council meeting. So we're going to actually need to survey everyone just for a date.
Yeah, I changed.
Off that cycle.
Okay, I changed to the 8th, but I didn't change the date. So we may be looking at something different for them.
We, we'd like to, you know, be sensitive to everybody's schedule and try to bump it kind of in that four to six or five to seven, however we can, however we can finesse it. But to, of course, then offer dinner and, and try to accommodate as many of y'all as, as long as we can on each of those days. But rather than, it is only four meetings for the steering committee. But again, we just want everybody to kind of be hearing from the consulting team. They felt that was really important. So everybody's on board with the overall direction as we move along. And, yeah, and then try to, try to use the existing meeting schedule as much as possible so as not to make you come back for another day. But the first one, to get it off and running, working with existing schedules with the consultants, we're going to have to pick a different day for the September one, but we would poll, poll y'all and the, and the planning commission as well to try to find the best date for everybody on that.
Thank you very much. I could be selfish and say, can you leave off? But at any rate, you can't work around everybody. We'll see how it all turns out. Thank you very much. Okay. Great, anything else?
Anything in particular you wanted to say about the project or just?
No, I mean, just a, real, real briefly, I've, I've had two weekly meetings. No, I mean, just real briefly, I've had two weekly meetings with them so far. Still just very much in the formulation stages, working on some little bit of light branding for the, for the project, still waiting on those materials to come back. The consultant's been doing a lot of data gathering with various staff members in the town and really just trying to get a good sense of direction for that first meeting with the steering committee. And then also to kind of, we're working currently now on some of the goals and objectives for the stakeholder meetings that they'll be doing, as well as their tour of the area. So we're, they're, they're coming to the, coming to the table quick, and so we still hope to meet that December-January timeframe.
Question? When you said tour of the area, what's the area?
The area would be our entire kind of urban service area, focusing, you know, mostly on the areas yet to be developed and then the primary redevelopment areas. But at a high level, the whole, whole service area.
I think it'd be helpful to, for that tour area to be expanded out further into Wake County, so that we can see what, what's happening in the county. Like I said, there are some cool things happening, there's some not cool things happening too, but to get to see that, I mean, different, people have different ability to visualize things. So seeing the empty land may not prompt, you know, what the possibilities are, but going to Raleigh or Cary might trigger, oh, that could go there, so that might be helpful.
Just to clarify, that was really a tour for the consulting team, but, but they also have done a lot of work in Wake County too, but we can certainly, I'll bring that up with them, absolutely.
We can, we'd be happy to coordinate anytime, some additional things like tours like that, you know, we could do that as well.
I think for, it'd be a good use of one meeting to hop on some buses and drive through the great Wake County traffic and see some different locations around the county and kind of see good projects that are going on in the county, so.
Yeah, and there will be, again, Rodney kind of alluded to this, there will also be the strategic advisory groups. There will be three of those. One of those is anticipated to be focused solely on outreach and ambassadorship for the project. The other two would be kind of topical things, and they're going to let the, kind of the involvement process flush those out. But one of them that they kind of foresee would probably be something that has to do along the lines of the aesthetics and the built environment and what it looks like. And so there's been, there's been a lot of questions coming from them about, you know, how do we, how do we get that information from y'all and from the public? So that could very well be a good type of exercise for that as well. So do keep those in mind, because we do want to plug you all into those strategic advisory groups, once they kind of start to formulate themselves a little better. So if there is a particular spot that's going to be of real interest to you, we definitely encourage you and will want you to kind of sign up for one of those.
Okay, Jeff, while you're there, thank you for your leadership in this, and y'all look forward to working with that. And also, thank your department. I know with some staffing challenges you've had there, you guys have kept the course and still working hard. And I want to thank you publicly for the good work that the planning, Planning Department is doing.
Good, good support team that's stretching to cover.
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure the council's comfortable with the direction we're taking with that, as far as the meeting schedules. And just since you're going to be here on those days anyway, except for, you know, some of you come to the planning commissions too, so, versus trying to come up with a whole nother date, so.
So you counsel, I mean, I think it's preferable, if you can, to coordinate on days when council is going to be here anyway. Okay, anything else?
I think that'll do it.
All right, I'm going to recognize our attorney for any reports she has.
Thank you, just briefly. Well, graduate of Garner High School and, we're familiar with the town than I am. As we were taking a tour around the day, old Kmart and the old Kroger, which gives me a visual reference of these. I've had two years to speak with my colleagues across the state, so I appreciate.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wilson, anything you care to comment about? You don't have to, but.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your opportunity to speak.
Good, we're glad you were able to come back to your hometown and do this work with our attorney. Great. Okay, was that it, Ms. Jones? I guess it was, yeah, okay, thank you. There is no closed session tonight, is that right? Okay, so let me go to council reports anyway. So I'll start to my right with Mr. Vance.
No reports tonight.
Sure, Mr. Challenger?
Yes, just three quick things. One, I want to thank planning staff for this piece of map edge that is being updated pretty regularly. I would make a recommendation, I looked at the pipeline today, I think it would be helpful for the projects that are in the pipeline to also put them on, not the same map, but actually a completely different map, just so we can geographically see where they are. I don't think we need to break them down by multifamily, as long as there's a key, just having the name and the number of units would kind of help us visualize as projects come to us where they are in the town, so we can reference it with other projects.
Brian is actually, I'm not sure where exactly it is in his, but it's pretty near the top, to be working on a interactive map that can be online and updated constantly. So hopefully we'll have, but if we, if that's going to be a little ways out, we'll certainly do a static in the meantime.
A static by the work, a draft by the work session would be really good. Again, it doesn't have to be as detailed and broken out by project type, but just a number, name and number of units would be helpful. Thank you. Earlier, the other thing is earlier this summer, we had some charts and graphs related to growth metrics, and I think there were going to be some more we were going to get by August at some point, so I was kind of curious where the status, I know Mari had produced some.
We have run into a glitch with.
Okay, thank you. And the last point, question is on the sort of ETJ expansion and then sort of related to local area plans we approved and what the status of those plans are. I know we budgeted for those, but I'm not sure where we are in that process. Does anyone have an update?
So the ETJ.
Yeah.
And then embark on those individually.
When, what's sort of the deadline for CLUE? When do we expect that to be done? Because then we're looking six, seven, eight months out on getting those local area plans. All right, thank you.
Okay.
I just have a question in reference to the mapping that he asked.
Sure.
Planning Jeff, in reference to the type of map that is being created now, is it GIS based?
Yes, we're trying to get moved over to that, yes.
And will it be placed at a location where we'll be able to access it, to look at the updates when it's updated?
Yeah, the idea would be that we would have something integrated into the town's website, like most other jurisdictions have, so that it's freely, freely available and accessible.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah.
Did I get everybody? Did I miss anybody?
That's Ms. Behring, and me and Mr. Matthews.
Just a point of interest, maybe somewhat humorous, I was out visiting my oldest son in Wyoming for the past several days, and we toured the downtown area and saw a mural where women had petitioned for the vote back in the 1800s. And Wyoming was the first territory in the country to grant women the right to vote. But they were state number 44 to be admitted to the United States because the powers that be did not want women to vote. So I thought that was, we've come a long way, we'll put it that way. But it was interesting that they were the very first small, I think population-wise, they're the smallest, maybe not the smallest, but not a very large state, but at that time they were forced, they were forward-thinking and granted to women the right to vote in the 1800s.
Some beautiful range country out there, I know, I've been up in there as I go out to Colorado sometimes, yeah, thank you. All right, now, Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quite an important thing's going to be coming on this Sunday, so I hope everybody can attend, that the premiere of Home With Honor, it's a documentary about the walled at Hill that came to Lake Benson Park. It's quite a video, and it's going to be shown in the public for the first time, Sunday, August the 21st, at 3:00 PM at the Garner Performing Arts Center on Garner Road. There's no admission, and for the military, we'll have challenge coins for all of our Vietnam-era veterans. And so those who want to come out, it'll be very interesting to see that, and it was quite an undertaking. So that'll be just coming Sunday at 3 o'clock. So we encourage everybody to come and bring the kids, they need to see it. Thank you.
Singleton?
Yes, this is about a specific bus stop area here in town, I've noticed a couple of times on Garner Road, right in front of the GPAC, especially with some of the, not the comfortable weather we've had today, but the extreme heat. The people there waiting for the bus are sitting on, and sitting on the roots of the old trees. I don't really know if that's what we want them to do. There's no benches there, there's no covered area, I don't know if that's in the long-range plan, but you got, they're sitting on the roots of the trees, and I don't think that's exactly what we want people to do, to stay in the shade. There's no place to sit.
Yeah, we inquired about a couple of locations on Garner Road there, so John can give you an update.
Go Raleigh does have a plan so that.
Age of those trees, those, of course, roots are exposed, that's just, you don't want people stepping on them, crawling on them. I'm not saying there's a large amount of people doing it, but I saw two people today, and they're trying to stay cool, I understand that. And, you know, when it's 95 degrees, it's triple, triple digits, the real feel out in the air, so I just wanted to mention that. I will also mention, one of why I've got you here, when you're at Vandoor and Garner Road and you head, return left or head west into Raleigh, the stop right there, the bus can hardly get perpendicular to the curb because the stop is so close, and if you're following the bus, you're in the middle of the intersection. And that, the sidewalk there in front of Vandoor West, I don't go so far, but it needs to go further west, so the bus can get straight, and so the car, I mean, it's happened to me a couple of times, the bus stops and you're sitting in the middle of the intersection. It's not placed properly, it needs to be further west. Make it safe for anyone who's behind it, that's all. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Got to cover everybody? Okay, all right. Just a couple things I want to mention. One's fairly simple, straightforward, and I exercised in Lake Benson Park quite a bit, and so to my surprise, on one segment of the trail, a big pine tree had fallen across the trail, but I used my climbing ability and climbed over it and took a picture of it, and so. And now I wanted to thank Public Works, I sent the picture over to them, and they had their chainsaw group out there cutting that up and clearing the trail. So, Mr. Town Manager, if you have a chance to speak to the, to Mr. Jones, certainly thank him for that. Also, I want to include this in the record, and I've just handed, I guess, to the clerk, but I received a letter from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. It's a very short letter, but I'll read it to you. It says, "On behalf of the IMC, IIMC Board of Directors, please accept our condolences on the loss of former IIMC President Mary Lou Todd. We feel privileged to be able to honor Mary Lou's memory and her commitment to IIMC and Municipal Clerks worldwide. On her behalf, we are donating $50 to the IIMC Foundation to use toward furthering clerk education and professional development." So, you know, some time back, we did write a resolution in her honor upon her death, and this, this should be added somewhere in our records to further honor her life. So, John wanted to share that here. Okay, with that, that's all I have. No closed session. Counsel, are you ready to adjourn, or is there anything else from any of the other assistant managers? None, okay. All right. Well, in favor of a motion for adjournment, those who, excuse me, I guess I can't make that, but ask one of you two.
So moved?
Yep. All right, moving and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you all, counsel, for your work tonight, and we'll see you tomorrow, I guess. Okay, 10 o'clock.